Maybe having a fee exemption. And so, those are my thoughts.
Thanks for that. I, I agree with you that the, the intent is that people can come here to City Hall. It's accessible. It's, it's for the residents. I love, I love that idea for sure. So, any other questions or thoughts? Yeah?
I, I do have one shifting gears slightly. In, in the staff report, there's a proposed prohibition on political campaigns and campaign-related activities. I think there's maybe a discussion worth having about when this, this particular space, the council chamber space, or even the big multi-purpose room downstairs, is used for a political campaign event that is open to all candidates. So, for instance, the League of Women Voters Council debate on, though it's on the partisan side, you know, similar debates that that group hosts for state legislative candidates, or, you know, county commission candidates, things like that. To me, those feel slightly different than, you know, Kate, as an individual candidate, I want to reserve and use the space and, and potentially enjoy the backdrop as a candidate of City Hall versus encouraging public engagement through an, an event that's, it's an all candidate. And it could be an all candidate, as in the candidates up for general election, but I, I think the same would still hold as long as it was offered equally to all parties in a, in a primary debate that might feature only Republican candidates or only Democratic candidates, provided it's for all candidates within that particular section of the ballot that, to me, feels part of how we want residents to engage. So, when I read that part of the report, I wanted to ask if that was, if the intent was to cover those things or just when somebody is acting in an individual campaign candidate activity versus broadly?
Yeah, the, great question. The intent was to not do anything that would prohibit the city from hosting a voter information get-together or voter educational experience. So, and I think that's how we might, might read it, or I should say write it, is something along those lines that, you know, nothing should be construed to prohibit the city from hosting an event that has these criteria, which would be something that is intended to educate voters and is available to all candidates or parties.
But if an individual candidate, like if I wanted to host it, then that would go into the fee? Because the city's not hosting.
It would not be allowed.
It would not be allowed.
As, yeah, as drafted, it wouldn't be allowed. But what, how do you feel about, because I, I want to make sure we're on the same page as a whole group about partisan elections versus municipal elections? To me, ensuring that our residents can engage with their state level or county level, or if we were so lucky to host a congressional debate, that that would be something their residents could access here. So, I wanted, I'd be interested to hear what the staff and the rest of the council's feedback is on the nature of the partisan all candidate type events versus only municipal all candidate type events.
Yeah, I feel like if it was, in my, my opinion is, is if it was a race that was, that was partisan, if, if it's something that's educational in nature, if it's something that is, is not, like every single candidate is invited, so there's, it's not like some resident can just handpick, oh, these are my favorite candidates and this person is going to be here to talk to everybody. If it's like, oh, every candidate was invited and so it's a forum where everyone can hear from every candidate or something like that. But ultimately, I think that the city has to be able to, you know, have final say for, for these kind of questions that may arise. But any other thoughts? From council members?
I don't, I don't think I need to differentiate between partisan and nonpartisan as long as it's an all candidates event where it's a, a true open invitation to everyone running for an office to participate in an open forum that can educate voters and help them decide.
Does everybody agree?
I agree.
Sorry. So, does, does that mean all candidates of one party or all candidates of all parties?
All parties.
Sorry, are you asking, Gary, so let's, for sake of example, let's say that in 2026, there's a, in, in, for the voters of Bountiful, on their ballot, they might see a Republican primary and a Democratic primary. Both of those entities could hold independent all candidate events, or it's only that this facility would be available for a general election partisan all candidate event?
That's my question.
Wow.
Yeah. I think, I think that in any given race, if all candidates, for example, you know, in the, in a legislative race, and if it's like a statewide race, but there are people in our community, I think everyone who is running for that, for that position, if, if everyone who is running for that position is invited to participate as a candidate, then...
Did you say indicted?
Invited. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah.
Just teasing, just teasing, a little political humor.
So, as long as every candidate is invited despite their party, I, I think that that's the main thing.
I wish we could use it, we, I think it's our friends from Fruit Heights that have pine cone and sagebrush. So, as long as all pine cones are invited to the pine cone debate and all sagebrushes are invited to the, for anyone listening, you should look up the interesting caucuses that Fruit Heights has.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Of the sagebrush and pine cone parties. But, yeah. So, as long as all pine cones are invited to the pine cone primary debate and all sagebrushes, then...
So, you're saying that the sagebrush party could rent the building to hold a debate with their candidates?
And the next night, pine cone.
In the primary.
In the primary. And the next night, pine cone can rent it for all the pine cone candidates to be at their debate.
In this scenario, does, do we risk the possibility of appearing as though the city favors pine cones over sagebrush? As opposed to just having a general, I'm just going with that, having, allowing a general election? I, I think that is kind of more along the lines of a city use. That would be my preference as opposed to political parties. Just, it would be a general election and, to me, that also kind of is a little bit more in alignment with our nonpartisan elections where all candidates would also be invited. That's just my preference. That's just me.
It has certainly been easier to administer and less fraught with problems to be able to say, we don't allow partisan activities in the building. But that is a policy decision for you all.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. And what's interesting with that question is, if you say we, we don't allow partisan, partisan activities, if there's a random, if there's a resident who is interested in having an educational night and they want to invite people here and if they want to have a meeting and if they want to educate them and they have sort of an agenda, like, I want to, you know, get signatures for this kind of referendum or I want to, you know, just whatever it is. The, I mean, the city, the city may or may not have a, have a dog in that fight. The city may or may not, you know, so it is, it is tricky once we get into talking about partisanship or promoting, you know, education about various things that people might want to gather and discuss. And so, it's a good question, I think, to define what we're, what we're talking about and what we're allowing here. So...
My preference would be that as long as all, all candidates that are appearing on that ballot, whether it's a primary ballot, a partisan primary ballot, or a general ballot are invited, I would open it up. I, I would submit that we are better served as a city with the overlap of, of city and state and city and federal and city and county for our voters to have as many opportunities to meet candidates and ask questions. And the shorter drive they have to do it and the more accessible is a good thing. So, as long as it's all candidates organized by, you know, a reputable group, either the party or someone that we've worked with in the past, like the League of Women Voters, that is ensuring a, a, plenty of, of notice and time for all candidates to be included that are on that ballot, that would be my, my preference.
And that makes sense to me because there are some elections where, unfortunately, you know, the, the one party is, is, the primary is kind of where the most robust, robust discussion happens as opposed to the general election. So, it makes sense that we would want to allow some kind of an educational forum in the primary, during the primary, as long as all candidates are invited. But if we're talking about, so I agree, I agree with Councilwoman Bradshaw. Any other discussions about partisan, partisan debate-type forums versus like individual resident education kind of forums?
I think that, if I might.
Sure.
That, that speech should be encouraged. I agree with what Councilmember Bradshaw said about even hosting partisan political events as long as all folks are invited. And given the time of year, I would think that we would want to use pine cone and hollyberry parties rather than pine cone and sagebrush parties.
We can alert our friends in Fruit Heights to your suggestion for the change to their historic party process.
Thank you. Good thoughts?
Just, and so we're, what we're, we're clear, what we're talking about is educate, voter education opportunities, not caucuses, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Not just voter education, but also voter engagement. Make it easier for the voters to be with candidates.
Open to all public.
So, if I may.
Open to all candidates, please.
Then in this scenario where it would be all candidates invited from, you know, the sagebrush, no, hollyberry party.
Thank you.
That, would the official hollyberry party need to be sponsoring the activity? I mean, I think there's just like a lot of gray that happens in these scenarios. And I, I think, in my opinion, I feel almost more comfortable defaulting to the staff recommendation because there are other venues that are in Bountiful, that are on our city campus, library, et cetera, where we don't have the possibility of endorsement creep and/or, you know, regulating who can host it, how can they host it? Who, and then ensuring that all of the various candidates are invited. So, for those reasons, I just personally would prefer the staff recommendation.
Do you, do you think it's possible as a, as an idea or something that staff might craft into an application? To, to me, it would seem very logical and reasonable that it's either the, the, the party, if it's a partisan event, the party that is hosting it. So, it needs to be a, a party officer that's filling out and completing the application and agreeing to a, checking a box to attest that this is an official party event to which all candidates are invited. And then in a, in a nonpartisan municipal year, we don't have the same equivalent. So, somehow on our form that staff would be reviewing, there'd be some attestation that it's a group that is seeking to do something very similar. I mean, to me, that's, the League of Women Voters has often filled in the gap throughout Davis County and statewide to do that, but we don't have the equivalent of a hollyberry or a pine cone in the municipal side, except for Fruit Heights. So, but somewhere you'd be, you'd be, you'd be attesting that you have, that you are either one of the registered political parties in the state and that you are conducting an all candidate voter education event. If you're in a municipal cycle, then you are attesting that you are inviting all candidates to the municipal cycle.
Does that seem comfortable?
I mean, we can, we can definitely craft it that way. What I'm hearing is, just to reiterate, is that events intended to educate voters to which the public is invited are allowed, whether it's partisan or not, provided every candidate in that election is also, is invited to participate.
Yes.
Did somebody write that down?
That's right.
Everyone's invited to the hollyberry ball.
Right.
Hey, I like it.
Okay.
If that is the direction we take, then I do think we need to have some kind of attestation as...
I like that idea.
As, as brought up by Councilmember Bradshaw and that the official party and position held by the individual and the attestation affirming that they understand the rules of engagement of this type of an event.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
A last question on food, food.
Yeah.
Do you feel like, I bet that there are going to be so many instances where people have food and it is so not an issue, but it'll just take one really bad food incident for it to be a lot more than $60 to address. Does that, since it's a deposit and potentially if you go about your meeting and there's no issues, you get your deposit back, should it be a little bit higher? I mean, like what thought process went into picking these levels? Because I just...
Can I piggyback on that? I, I know that some of you expressed a desire to leave the non-resident fee structure as it is. And I wondered if Gary could opine very briefly on how those numbers were derived and whether or not you hope that those numbers remain or if you'd like our input on those.
But first, Councilmember Bradshaw's question. So, we were trying to strike a balance between how much a person would really want to be able to afford for use of the building. If you make it so expensive, even with the deposit, i- we're not going to have a lot of use. But at the same time, of course, we're very concerned about repairs or whatever we may have to fix in the event of a bad actor, and we will have them. It's one of the reasons that we're suggesting, unless it's a city event, not to allow anybody to, you put food in this room. We will have spills. We will have problems. We will have carpet that will have to be replaced or cleaned. So, if the council's amenable, we would not be, we wouldn't feel bad about increasing the deposit amount for any of those or the non-resident amount, assuming that residents treat it a little bit better.
Okay. Sounds good.
I don't have any heartburn if there's some additional differentiation between resident and non-resident to Councilman Higgins' point. So, if you, I don't know what that number should be, but I like that there's a differentiation if it's slightly greater by agnostic. And then with food, I just, I don't, I don't want to dissuade people from using. I completely agree, probably not in the council chamber. But also want to recognize that it just takes one really good red punch to make the carpet difficult.
Well, that's good. That's good direction. So, is the majority of the council okay with saying, let's increase the fees slightly for non-resident rates?
I, I'm not stuck on that idea. I just thought it would be good to have a discussion on it.
Yeah.
But of course, it can be revisited down the road as well.
Sure.
And I do want to reiterate what Councilmember Child said, and that is that I think we ought to treat nonprofits and, you know, quasi-government partners with a very gentle touch when it comes to fees. I'd prefer to err on the side of not charging those fees to those groups. So...
Okay. Good. Do you feel like you have direction?
Yeah. Let me just check really fast. Proposed hours of use is really the last question. We would suggest that it not be available for rent during business hours. And so, that would mean that it could be used from six to 10 on Monday through Thursday and seven to 10 Friday, Saturday. And, and then, of course, we could allow people, if we wanted to, as a city, as we do now, to use it at the same time. We've done that. We've hosted organizations during business hours. But the idea of just letting the public rent it while we're here in business, or here operating seems like it'd be an unnecessary conflict.
Sounds fine. Is everybody okay with those hours?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll, we'll get going on it.
Thanks. We'll just have a brief five or six-minute break and we'll be back for our regular council meeting at 7:00. Okay, it is Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council meeting tonight, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Steve Huish.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And now, James Harris will lead us in an opening prayer.
Our dear Father, we're very thankful to thee for this time to be together. We're grateful to have the opportunity to be involved in our community and find ways to serve and help each other. We're grateful for the spirit that our city council and our mayor and the city staff create and maintain and for how that blesses and helps all of us citizens of, of Bountiful. We pray for thy guidance and spirit and strength. Please guide each of us in the choices we make and the things that we choose to do. We ask thee to bless and sustain our political leaders and are grateful to them for their service. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much for that prayer. We now are excited to have our public comment period. We would love to hear from you. If you would like to speak, please come and state your name and where you live, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, Richard Watson, Bountiful. First off, I just want to say our Christmas concert is this Friday. Tickets are still available. Information's on the back table. But I'm really here to thank Kendall and Cecily for their support of our concerts and we'll miss you, but we know you have lots of stuff to do after being on the council, so... And also, especially want to thank Galen Rasmussen for, for helping us on our concerts. Some of our concerts wouldn't have happened without him. So, I appreciate the accolades that you give me, but really, Galen is the one guy behind the whole scenes. So, I really appreciate him and I'm really going to miss him. So, thank you, Galen, for helping me out, so...
Thank you, Richard.
Gary Davis, 2814 South, 500 West here in Bountiful. First off, as a citizen, I would like to thank Jed, yeah, I can't read that, for the input he's provided on the power commission. Very nice. And Galen, the only thing I really know about him is when he's been sitting up here, talking before the council and now I just find out he's, I know he's done a lot of stuff behind the scenes and I really appreciate, as a citizen, the things that he has done. Now, on to the other thing, this rental policy. I'm curious, is this a policy to fix a known problem? These are just rhetorical questions. A policy to fix a problem or is this a solution in search of a problem? I had a couple of questions that, a little bit of research, I fixed up. Comments were made several times about discretion being used. Who's discretion and how's that going to be done? And there was also a thing about groups meeting a criteria that's not listed. That always concerns me a little bit with government entities and organizations. Instead of sagebrush, how about tumbleweeds? Those are my personal favorite. Thank everybody. Thank all of you for the wonderful job you're doing.
My name is Alan Arbuckle. I live in Centerville. I feel like I'm an outcast here, but I do have property in Bountiful. I'm a real estate broker and I have some clients that have property here in Bountiful. And I'm just making a plea that maybe the city council can work on simplifying the processes for getting conditional use permits and maybe not going through all the hoops. I, we're, we're going through with a client right now for the diamond rental building and the process is kind of overwhelming. And I've been trying to work with staff. I would just encourage the city council to maybe trust in their paid staff and some of the planning commission people. They're smart people. They can figure this out and maybe not have to go through city council issues. I mean, approvals for those types of things and maybe simplify the process. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'd love to hear from you if you, if there's anyone else who would like to speak.
Thank you. I would like to just say that I'm thankful for Kendall as a mayor and I know that in the past, when somebody has asked for donations for anything, no matter what it be, whether it's for goods or for anything else, if a person gives money and they feel like their money has been used while they give again. And I feel like the analogy I want to make is that when Kendall first asked us to hold signs for her when she was running for city council, we, as a family, supported her in that wholeheartedly. And it's been easy for us to want to support her every time after that because of the time and commitment that we knew she would always put into it. She put her whole heart and soul into it and I want to thank her for her integrity and for caring so much about Bountiful.
Thanks, Mom. Cozette Kais. Cozette Kais, Bountiful resident. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? We'd love to hear from anyone else that would like to make a comment.
I'll go as well. So, I'm Kendall's husband, James, and I just wanted to say how proud I am of her and her hard work and effort. This is, she told me when we were first going to get married, she wanted to run for office and she hoped that that was okay, and she's done it. I, I would also like to just take a moment and thank pretty much everyone here on this stand has had personal involvement with Kendall and she comes home and tells me the stories and talks about you guys. And, and I've had experiences with some of you as well on, at activities and things and you've just been a wonderful group to deal with. I know you deal with a lot of difficult things, but there's also a lot that you guys do that's great and it's amazing and we appreciate you very much. So, so thank you from me and from my family.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to the whole group. I, I've watched over the years of being here. I live in North Salt Lake, by the way, which isn't nearly as great as Bountiful. What else can you say? But I really appreciate the things that carry on in Bountiful and I appreciate each one of you in your own way. I, I know a lot of your names because of things that Cecily's told me and how great you are. And I appreciate what Cecily's done. I just think she's amazing and I give her an A++. I'm a teacher and I would give her that kind of a grade. And you know what? I think I'd give you all an A++ because you've done some hard things this last couple of years. It's not all just been ice cream and cake down here. You've, you've really worked hard, handled hard issues. You've really worked hard, handled hard issues, from your parks to your trails to just what's going to happen to the building. I appreciate the work that you've done. I love being here with you tonight. Thank you.
Barbara Price, for the record. Thank you so much. Really nice of you to speak. Thank you. Are there any last public comments? Thank you.
I wanted to say Casey Haslam. I actually live in Syracuse, but have a business in Woods Cross. Alan Arbuckle's, he's the one that got up. I'm the one looking at the Diamond Rental Building. It's been there forever. Anybody I talk to about looking at getting there, they're like, "Oh, yeah, I know right where that is." And obviously, everybody wants to do business in Bountiful, but it has been kind of, I don't know, a headache, I guess. There's just been, I mean, I'm not planning on doing anything grand, just cleaning up a building that's there and using it instead of just having it kind of be an eyesore that's always been there for however many years. But it seems like no matter what I do, there's just something else, and then something else. And I just, I don't know. I want to be in Bountiful versus pushing me out of Bountiful because I just can't somehow meet the standard of like what we're supposed to be doing. So, yeah, if there's anything we can do to like make something a little bit easier process to do business here, started my business just a couple of years ago. So, it's like I'd like to continue to grow in Bountiful. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, we will now turn to, do we have a representative here from the youth council tonight? Oh, okay, we do. Yes, thank you.
We have Lily Evans here tonight. Come on up, Lily. I'm just going to take a half a second to say it's been such a privilege and honor to work with the Bountiful City Youth Council. And individuals like Lily are the absolute reason why Lily is a super committed Bountiful City Youth Council member. She's been involved for multiple years. She is our mayor this year, and she's done a fabulous job. And I'm super proud of Lily. She is a senior at Woods Cross High School, and she is participating right now or getting her dental assistant licensure through. Yeah, so, good for you, and she's just exceptional. So, she's going to tell us a little bit about what's happening with the B C Y C.
Thank you. Okay, so at the end of November, we wrapped up our food drive. It went really well. We had a lot of participation. Just this past Tuesday, we had our white elephant. We had a lot of participation for that, too. It was a really fun day. Coming up on January twentieth, we have a service project at the food pantry. We're going to go help out over there. And then we are also just in the middle of planning our day at the legislature on January twenty-third. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lily. Appreciate you being here tonight. Okay, we now will have our council reports. Councilwoman Price Hewish, would you have anything to report tonight?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Okay. So, just a few things happening around town. Well, one, I do want to just welcome so many members of the Power Commission, and we're going to be getting to that in a little minute, why everyone is here. But I look out, and I just see so many people who make sure that our lights are on and that our rates are low and that our resources are sufficient. And it's, I've been able to serve on the Power Commission with so many of you individuals here, and I consider that a great honor. So, welcome to city council tonight. I also wanted to just say, woo-hoo, big shout out to our snowplow drivers. This past week, we had some serious snow. And, you know, don't you love that sound of the snowplow coming up the road? I love it. You feel the rumble. You hear them coming. You're like, yes. And it's so exciting, and it's really fun because we're going to be naming a number of our snowplows. So, not in the too far future, you're going to be able to look out and say, "Oh, there comes Darth Blader," or whatever it is. So, anyway, it's, I just, all the respect in the world to Charles Benson, Streets Director, and his crew, who make sure our streets are plowed, the best plowed streets in Utah, and I'm sticking by that. The ice ribbon is open. I love just driving by there. It's a happy maker. Even if you don't go ice skating, just drive by. You will just get excited. The lights are on. It's super fun. And I also, oh, okay, I wrote down quite a few things. During this holiday season, when a lot of us are shopping local, if you've been paying attention to the general plan update or just what we're doing here at city council, you'll know that we're, we really want people to get engaged with Bountiful City. If you have the opportunity and the ability to shop in Bountiful and support our local businesses, please do that. We have so many locally owned businesses and local proprietors who just put in the work every day. They're committed. I love this young man who just spoke, who said, "I want to be in Bountiful. I want to continue growing in Bountiful." And that is how every business in Bountiful feels. So, if you have a chance, shop local, support our local businesses, especially during this time of year. I know they'll appreciate it. And let's see, oh, another thing. If you noticed on your seat, and if you are sitting in a seat that didn't have this, just walk up and get one. Richard, will you hold yours up? This is a fun little graphic that I've just, I'm taking the privilege to do this tonight. It's my last meeting. This is a little coloring page that is a Merry Christmas Bountiful theme. I heard about it from Millie Segura Barr, who's here, former council member, and it is a graphic that was drawn by former Bountiful employee Rebecca Hatch. And she used to run the farmer's market and a number of other things. She was amazing. So, take this home, color it, share it with your loved ones. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Child.
Yes, I just want to take a personal moment and say thank you to those who are honoring tonight, to Jed Pitcher and to Galen Rasmussen, and a very personal thank you to Mary Harris and Councilwoman Price Hewish. And I'm not going to say more. I'll probably cry, but thank you for all you've done. From the service council side of things, thank you, Richard, for announcing the vocal city Christmas concert this Friday. Please, please, please come if you can. This is a fundraiser for our summer concert series. So, and it will be a wonderful concert. Thank you to our city and the Emergency Response Council for the Shake, Rattle and Roll Earthquake Drill Event. I heard that was very successful. And for the youth council and the city for putting together the food pantry, or for the food pantry for putting together the food drive. That was also a successful event. One more thing, there's an interfaith choir concert on December twenty-first at the Bountiful Tabernacle, and that will be a wonderful event, as always, with many groups from our community. So, that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bratchaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I have lots of thoughts about our people that we're going to be recognizing tonight, but I'm going to save them for those portions. Instead, just invite everyone to remember that the Bountiful Davis Art Center has the winter art market that is currently open, has lots of fabulous local crafts that might be the perfect gift for someone on your list this year. Lots of cute things in all price ranges that are available. And also stop by and check out the gingerbread houses and the gingerbread festival as well. Hopefully, some of them have mansard roofs. Can't let it go.
Thank you. Councilman Higginson.
Mayor, there was not planning commission meeting this past week, so I have no report. But I do want to make a couple of personal thank yous, if I could.
Please.
In that allotted time. First of all, again, acknowledging Jed Pitcher's long service on the Power Commission and his leadership there. Also acknowledging Galen Rasmussen and his expertise and professionalism. There was, there was lots of discussion on the local Bountiful page on Facebook this past week, some of it talking about Bountiful City staffing and employment policies, et cetera. And it was a privilege to get on there and be able to share with folks what a consummate professional Galen Rasmussen has been. And he's made our job easier. He has carefully watched over the money of Bountiful residents. And I thank him for that. And now, on a somewhat more personal note, Councilmember Price Hewish and Mayor Harris. I've had an interesting year in which I achieved a great weight loss goal that I had not set. But anyway, your kindness and support and encouragement, when I didn't have encouragement and support coming from inside me, was key. And I just want to personally thank you both. You've been so kind and so thoughtful and so caring, as is everybody else here. But, but I appreciate you both. Not only were you so kind and careful with me, but you've also been as well professional and courteous and kind in your duties here. And you just couldn't have done your jobs any better than you have. So, thank you for that personally.
Thank you. Councilman Murray.
I don't think it's fair to be last. I'm trying to think of how to make my update exciting. But for those of you who are wanting to experience an amazing Thursday evening, there is a truth in taxation. What do you call it? Well, yeah, it's hearing at the mosquito abatement building on Thursday at seven. It's going to be an amazing event.
You know, when Ron Mortenson stands up and says he supports taxes, it's amazing.
I know. He's here, and I was so grateful for that.
Yes.
I keep that in the back of my head and know that that's why this event's going to be so amazing. On a personal, echo Richard for Jed and Galen. It's been a pleasure working with you and learning city policies and stepping into this role in the last couple of years. And to Mayor Harris, thank you for reaching out and helping me get prepared for this opportunity and for the support and the calls that you've provided and helping me just work through this stuff. And Cecily, or Councilwoman Price Hewish, we've been, we've worked together a long time. And I know you're not going far, and our friendship will continue. But I've really enjoyed the pleasure of working with you on the community council and having a pause, but getting back on city council to work alongside you. So, thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll now consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid October twenty-second and twenty-fifth, November fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth, twenty-sixth, and December first, as well as the October 2025 financial report.
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve those as printed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Price Hewish. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we'll move on to something fun, and that is, I'm so grateful that Jed Pitcher agreed to come tonight. What a, what a man, and he has been serving on the Power Commission for 26 years. Is that right? Twenty-six years. And so, I know that there are some power commissioners here to support him, and he's here tonight with his wife. And we're so grateful for you as well and your service to Bountiful City while he is serving for 26 years. But the kind of things that we have gone through on the Power Commission over those 26 years, there's no way you could have ever imagined the kinds of questions and decisions and things that we have gone through. And I just so appreciate your dedicated service and your, your, I mean, everyone will agree, Suzie, you know, the chair, Chair Becker on the Power Commission was saying, "I just really valued the financial questions that he would ask and all the different insights that he would bring to these meetings." And so, I'm going to ask Alan Johnson if he's willing to come up and just say a few words about Jed Pitcher being on the planning commission all these years. And we're just so grateful for your dedicated years of service.
Yeah, Mayor, this is, it's an exciting time, but it's a sad time when Jed has reached that point that he wants to retire and go off and do other things. But I just want to point out, echoing some of the things that you took some of my thunder out. But I will say Jed is one of those ones that you had the pillar of the financial. He would go through the finances. He was there. He's been one of those ones that's been instrumental in making sure that financially the department was solvent, we were meeting our needs, we were looking into the future. That financial thing was there. He was always prepared, always been there. When you think in 26 years, it's amazing. First, it was in the evening when he first started. It would have been on a Tuesday evening that we'd, and the last few years, it has been on the mornings. But for 26 years, he's come once a month, and he's been there for many times, and we've had to call him for other issues. But I kind of went back through the things that when he first started in 1992, one of the first budgets that Jed would have been involved with, just to put it in perspective, was about twelve and a half million dollars, which sounds like a lot of money. But the last one we just basically went through here was almost 44 million. So, you look at the fact that how much the dollars have gone on. The load was 47 megawatts. It's now 82 megawatts. So, we've been there, through there. He's been through instrumental as we've gone through our 138 substation, which we first had to put transformers in, work it out, totally rebuild it. He's been instrumental in going through the finances of redoing four of our sub main substations. Of course, the one we're going through now is roughly a six and a half million dollar project. And as we're being able to do this with funded within pay-as-you-go, which is very instrumental, and we'll be able to do for lots of people. But Jed has been one of those stewards to go through. As you said, it's not always been fun. You know, the resources, he was there when we signed up for our San Juan coal project. He was there when we had to shut it down. That tells you, he's been there through both the whole process of having it. He's been involved as we've gone through our IPP project from coal to the repowering. He was there as we went through the solar projects, all the things we've gone through. A lot of people were upset, and they've had to stand there. You had Jed was steward right there, backing up decision, digging in and knowing what it was. I've just got to say how much I'm going to miss Jed on the Power Commission, and how much not only myself, but the others have really cherished what his knowledge and what he was saying, and his professionalism, what was gone in there. So, I can't say enough for what Jed has done for this city in 26 years. And it hasn't been for the pay he's been getting. It's been, I say, and I know Suzie, did you want to say something real quick before we turn some time over to Jed?
What a privilege it has been to serve on the Power Commission with Jed. You know, I was thinking, when Jed speaks, you listen. He has an unusually keen mind, and has been stated this incredibly strong financial background. One of his qualities, I think, has stood out to me a lot about Jed is he has an ability to cut to the core of an issue immediately. He just knows what he's doing. His questions are pertinent. They just drive right to the key issues. And I have learned a lot from him. I will miss him. Tried to talk him out of it when he called, but I wasn't very successful, as you can tell. But I'm grateful for him, grateful for his friendship to all of us. He has been such a kind example as a leader as well. And thanks to all of you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you, Jed.
Thank you, Jed. Would you like to say a few words?
I would be happy to. Twenty-six years is a long time. I was eighteen when I was assigned to this. Just kidding. I've worked with five mayors. I've worked with a wonderful city council all these years, two city managers, and I think our city manager is terrific. And I've worked with two power commissioners and, or power commissioner, I'm sorry, two power directors and a wonderful board. This is a great board. And I thank you, mayors, for letting me serve because 260 meetings is a lot of meetings. And the issues the commission is facing now are big issues. And we have the right people to make the right recommendations to the council. So, thank you once again. It's been a pleasure, and good luck to all of you. Thank you. Thank you.
And we have a plaque for him with these 26 years. I'm going to call it extremely small token, but we appreciate all of what you've done. I'm going to say we're going to miss you on the power board.
Thank you very much.
And I'm like Suzie, if we could talk you into staying, we would gladly be able to do that.
Would... Jed, would you be okay if the council meets you just right here in front of the dais for a quick picture?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One more. Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to our next exciting agenda item, and that is, so we really appreciate you being here tonight, Jed and Jed's family and the Power Commission. And we understand if at some point it's time for you to leave. So, don't feel obligated to stay. We now are excited to honor Galen Rasmussen for his retirement after 33 years. And Galen, where is Galen? Okay, Galen, okay. Thank you, Galen. Galen Rasmussen has been the city, the assistant city manager. And he is retiring now after being here at Bountiful City for 33 years. And what I think you might not know about Galen is that him and I were a cornhole team. And I think that it's safe to say, I'm guessing you agree with me on this, that the reason we didn't participate this year is we didn't want to beat everyone and embarrass anyone.
I totally support that.
Yeah, right? So, that's why we didn't compete this year. But last year, we were a force to be reckoned with.
Yes, I appreciate your memory.
Yes. But you've heard Galen described tonight as behind the scenes, and I think that that is true. He has been behind the scenes in a lot of ways for the city. And, you know, he's a little more reserved, a little more quiet. But he is a powerful man that has done so much good for our city. And so, you are understated, but the good you have done for Bountiful is just immense. So, I'd like to turn the time over to Gary to talk about Galen. I know he's excited to do that, and then we'll talk about him a little more.
Diane, could you come up too? I have to put one of those grandbabies down, yeah. Galen and Diane are awesome. Galen was hired as the treasurer for the city 33 years ago, quickly became the administrative services director. And then, when I was hired, the assistant city manager and has had responsibilities ranging from the budget to grants to overseeing and helping with the financial department, the finance department, utility billing, IT. Let's see, various duties is assigned. But the one thing that most people probably don't know about Galen is that he is a wicked punster. Galen is, he is, and I would say, a terrible punster. And many of us have been afflicted by him for many, many years. And so, Galen, it's payback time. So, I have a few puns related to your job that I think that will help us all get to know Galen and make him feel appreciated. You know, one of Galen's responsibilities has been forecasting city revenues. But it's not easy. It's taxing. And I've noticed that Galen's pretty exhausted at the end of the budget process. After allocating money to all the departments, he's spent. I didn't say they were good puns. These just, this is payback, right?
I've found that they're usually funnier if you don't have to explain them.
Okay, okay. Of course, all this goes without saying. Understanding the city's budget categories is an important part of Galen's job. It's fundamental. That's right. Galen also has responsibility to provide wrap tax money to local organizations. It's a process he takes very seriously. He never takes wrap tax for granted. At this point in the presentation, I planned to make a joke about authorizing funding, but I couldn't find anything appropriate. Finally, Galen's been working for the city for a long time, and he's been a super help to me. He's a man of integrity, and I think that's probably the best thing I could say about him. We have complete trust in Galen and his abilities. And if somebody asked me if I would change anything, I would say I wouldn't budget. Galen, congratulations. Now, we have some flowers for Diane, and then, Galen, we'd love to hear a few words from you.
She is the beautiful rose that's next to me, as well as these. So, thank you very much. And I'll definitely have to get a copy of those pens. Yeah, that was excellent. I always wonder what he's doing sometimes when his door is closed. Now, I know. I appreciate all of you to a person and the very kind things that have been said about me. Today's been quite a whirlwind of things going on. Tributes and staff meeting and going to lunch and all the various things that go along with it. Everyone has been very kind. It's been a pleasure working for the city, and I feel it's an honor. And I'm also grateful for the support team that you see behind me and here next to me. When we first came, Diane and I, we had one daughter, Jenny, and that was back 33 years ago. But now, we've added to that my other daughter, Melissa, and then our son-in-laws, Beau and Mitch, and then six grandchildren, so three on each side. And so, we're now a larger team than we were before. But I'm grateful for them, their support as always, and for them being here tonight because when you're eight years old on down, it's a difficult thing to sit for a while. So, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve with you on many occasions, going through many budget sessions together and through even at times, things that were tougher that we had to go through. We had, I got, looking back through the years and thinking about the two windstorms, the fire that we went through, an earthquake, Y2K, just everything you could think of that we had to endure as staff and as elected officials, as well as the citizens that we serve. And grateful that we had those experiences. It makes us stronger. They say that those things that don't kill you make you stronger. I suppose that we're supermen now because we've gone through those things. But thank you so much for your willingness to entertain this guy for 33 years and for the opportunity to serve. And I knew I couldn't get through this without a little bit of tears. But it means a lot to me to have so many good people to be with, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Galen. Can we get a picture?
Absolutely, yep. All right, here we go. Now, I'll get out of the way.
We're going to miss you, Galen. Thank you. So, we are now... It is now time on the agenda for us to recognize Councilwoman Price Hewish and her achievements, her accomplishments here during her four years. Cecily, she... Councilwoman Price Hewish tonight has already said "happy maker." That's one of her adjectives. That's one of her phrases that she uses to describe things, and I would describe her as a happy maker. I remember Boone, her son, posted that she brings the sunshine when she comes to visit. And I think that is absolutely true about you. You have a joy within you. You... She's such a good team player. She has made stickers that are so fun. The water department director, well, the water department, one of the head, the leads in the water department made, said the phrase, "We go until we win. It's just what we do." And we love that phrase, and she made stickers and handed them out to everyone. And then, when the squirrels came and they were plaguing us with the power department, she made a squirrel sticker. And it's, she's just, she brings the fun. And she's very, she's very studious. She's very thorough in her research. The thing, another thing about Councilwoman Price Hewish is that she is always rooting for the underdog. And so, in her, in the things that she's concerned about here with council members, she wants to make sure that the underrepresented are represented. And she really cares about those on the margins and wants to include and help and lift. And so, four years, you've done a lot in four years. And I just really appreciate you and your presence here. And I'd love to ask council members if they'd like to chime in too about your contributions here.
Mayor, can I, even though I have already opined on the subject?
Please.
I just want to say that no one has come to council meeting more, excuse me, more prepared and with more questions written up ahead of time than Councilmember Price Hewish. She took seriously her responsibilities, and she was uber-prepared for every meeting. And I commend her for that, even though sometimes I had to stay here longer than I otherwise would have because her questions generated a lot of discussion, which was the right thing for her to do. So, thanks for your preparation. Thanks for your pleasant demeanor. You're just always, you are yourself a happy maker, as the mayor said. And thanks for that as well. I appreciate our association. Thanks.
Kate was going to go, but I've said my piece as well. But thank you for your friendship for, I don't remember how many, it's got to be over seven years, eight years with community councils, so... But thank you. It's always a pleasure to rub shoulders with you and learn from your insights.
I'd like to thank you, Cecily. I think we've been in cahoots for, since our kids hit junior high. I remember a few PTA meetings where we'd, I'd tee it up and you'd throw the grenade. I'm thinking about a fanny pack incident at the junior high. But I have always appreciated Councilwoman Price Hewish, her brilliant mind and her glow and her passion for whatever she's doing. And I have learned so much from you over, not only in this position, but over the years. And I can truly say I wouldn't be here without you. And we are going to miss your deep insights and your great questions. So, thank you for everything.
Cecily, I sat down last night to write some thoughts. And at the top of my page, it says "happy maker," and I bugged that everyone else already said it first because that was the first, the first thing I wrote was Cecily is a happy maker. And I can't think of the number of times throughout the last few years when you've sent a text and you have wanted to shine a light on something that was happening in the city that just brought joy. And you've said, "You should drive by the skate park. It's a total happy maker." And then I thought, you know what? On my way home, I'm going to. And then I've watched the kids throwing tricks, and I have left happier. I also wrote down "little toot" and "big toot" as things that have entered our council lexicon for when, you know, something deserved just a little shout-out, but then something deserved a big shout-out. Because you have always brought the joy and then the sharing of the light. Also, I will never be able to think about our landfill without thinking about your absolute enthusiasm over a multi-year period for the landfill and finding such interest and joy in something that's kind of stinky. And not many people desire to visit. But you championed and spearheaded a field trip that I think we all found to be one of the most interesting and engaging field trips to visit the landfill. And without your finding that happy maker in something that most people would not have thought to find it in, we might not have been there. And then I have always been amazed as you've done your responsibilities assignment with the youth council. Whenever you are introducing a youth council member, you introduce them with a bio because you have gotten to know that individual person, and you have shared them with us before they get up to give their report. And to me, it shows your dedication that goes throughout your connection to residents of Bountiful, but that special connection to youth that I hope we carry forward with the youth council. And I don't, I don't think we'll be able to really have any city discussions going forward that don't include our Cecily-isms. And there will be forever happy makers and little toots and big toots that we talk about because you have made such an impact on all of us to remember to celebrate those things and to find those things that bring our residents' joy and that make living in Bountiful a spot where we're all really proud to call home. And so, thank you. And of course, you aren't going far. You can't go far. We'll make it a motion if we have to. We'll just find other ways to continue to serve with you because people who do the level and type of service you do aren't people that we allow to move on. We just find new ways to serve together. Thank you.
We have a gift. Are you, Gary, are you good to help us with this? Do you want to talk about it?
Do you want me to?
Oh, yeah, yes. Either, whoever.
Sure. You are such a good vanna, Gary. So, as your council colleagues were conspiring about what we thought would be an appropriate gift and memento to send you off with to thank you for your service, we thought about a project that was near and dear to your heart. And it was establishing a community garden. And it didn't necessarily, I think, go exactly as you originally envisioned, but you stuck with it, and you kept finding ways to still move forward a vision and a garden that'll be opening for the first time in 2026. And so, we sought out a picture from a newspaper in Bountiful that we felt helped represent your interest and support of community garden. And so, you'll notice this is about cantaloupe days. And so, this is an old picture of a float in Bountiful featuring cantaloupe days, which is, you know, an adjacent distant cousin to a community garden that we thought you would... you would enjoy and hope that you enjoy, that, that when we think of you, we think of happy makers and we think of gardens and things that grow.
Would you like to say a few words, Councilwoman Price Hewish?
You know I do. I've, I've just written a few thoughts, so I can try and stay on track. Oh, goodness. Wow, just looking out, and I think I didn't know so many people here four years ago, and now I consider so many of you friends. And, and just amazing human beings. I started this city council journey a few years ago with the premise and the promise that I love Bountiful. My husband and I moved here 25 years ago, and we raised our family here, started businesses here, made friends here, celebrated, grieved, played, worked, and built our village here. This truly is a wonderful place to set down roots, and I have loved this opportunity to serve the people of Bountiful. As a member of this city council, I can truly say that I love Bountiful even more today than four years ago. Okay, as has been mentioned, I really love to look for and then declare with enthusiasm that something is a happy maker, like the sunset tonight, am I right? Yeah, okay. So, and it's something that just makes my heart a little or a lot bit happier. A few of those things include our parks and our trails, our landfill, our police department, our power company, our tough and gritty snowplow drivers, our 24/7 water department crews, our streets crews, our city administrative staff, the farmer's market, the Bountiful-Davis Arts Center summer concerts in the park, partnering agencies like the rec district and the fire district, many local businesses that are only in Bountiful, like Parsons Bakery, I'm just throwing out some of my faves, Plates &amp; Palates, Bountiful Music, Touche, Tiamo, among others. Love the skate park, the views from the Bountiful Ridge Golf Course, and the volunteers and neighbors that make so much magic and build community and connecting and belonging in our community. There are literally too many places, people, and departments to give a shout-out to. However, I do know that people show up every single day for each other to do their jobs here at this city, to make life better, more comfortable, and safer for every resident here. And I just am amazed consistently and continuously by the professionalism of every person on this city's staff. I just look out at all of you, and I'm so grateful that I live in a city that people care so much about. I'm proud and grateful that I got to be part of this team for this window of time. I want to thank and express my love for my family, especially Steve. And this is a job that really involves everyone in your closest sphere, am I right? Am I right, Harris's? Yes. And my family has been supportive and truly so patient as I geek out about things like the storm drains, the general plan update, sprinkler systems, streetlights, water resource management, tax policy, Main Street, the cemetery, and above all, what? The landfill, okay? I've just been so enriched and made a better person by working with this exceptional group of people. Thank you, Kate, and Beth, and Kendalin, and Matt, and Richard, and Millie, and Jessie, and all of our incredible staff. It's so good. I've been truly blessed. I've loved this opportunity, and I know that Bountiful's gonna just continue upward and onward, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price Hewish. You are such a cheerleader for the city, and so, thank you. I know that won't end, just because you're done officially with your service here.
Mayor, would it be okay if, if I took the mic for a minute for our next item?
Sure.
So, our next item on the agenda is our opportunity to honor you as our mayor and your service, not just these last four years, but your two council terms as well. And when I, when I sat down last night to do the same exercise and, and write some thoughts to share about your service, the first thing I wrote down was "strength through kindness." In our, in our political system, at, at different levels of government, I think we've forgotten to celebrate kindness, and that there is, there is strength and there is leadership in different ways, and you have led this council and shown the people of Bountiful that you can accomplish many great things, and it doesn't ever have to be about scoring political points and victories. It can be through always showing kindness, and that kindness leads to strength. And you've shown us that through helping lead our county efforts on homelessness by helping find rubrics that would lead us to thoughtful decisions for, for those less fortunate, and always insisting that in a very tough and charged issue, that you return to those foundational issues and that everyone treat each other with respect and kindness. I have found in serving with you that you have never been afraid to ask tough questions or cast tough votes, but I have never left any of those meetings or decisions, whether we voted the same way or on opposite sides, feeling anything less than you had done your absolute best for the people of Bountiful, and that we parted again as friends and colleagues because the kindness was something that you felt needed to just be ever-present. As you have taken on and served as mayor these last four years, I have been impressed with your excitement and support, in particular of our local businesses and our Main Street. I am amazed, I have been paying particular attention these last several months to how you do this job and taking notes, and I have been amazed at how well you know and understand our local businesses in, in particular, and how many merchants you're able to talk to by name and then understand the intricacies of what they're dealing with, with their businesses. And that will make more sense when you see the, the gift that we have picked out for you, because it, it does represent the particular focus, and I think the absolute legacy that you have of supporting some of those key Main Street vibrancy issues that we have been working on, the excitement that we all have about Lucky Slice Pizza coming. And so, Vanna, City Manager Hill, has, we thought appropriate for you was a view of Bountiful's historic Main Street, and because that has been such a key part of, of your legacy and something that will just continue on and on to, to bless our residents, whether they're visiting or whether they're shopping, or whether they are conducting that absolute business. And we all are cheering for you and in your camp as you make the, the next move, and we know that you'll be able to take all of the elements that you have refined here working in Bountiful, which have so ably served us onto those next things. And like I mentioned with Cecily, we aren't ceasing to serve together, we are just all going to be serving together in new ways, and, and I know we're all excited to do that. And so, with that, I'd love to turn to, to my colleagues to say a few words as well.
Would it be appropriate for me to go first? First of all, I want to say that it's been a pleasure, and I couldn't echo loudly enough, Kate's comment about kindness, having worked together for 12 years now, it's been, you have been an example of that. People should know that you spearheaded the effort to get public comment in every meeting. That's a legacy that I think will continue as, as we move forward. We always struggle to get enough participation from the public, well, except when Deere involved, and then there's too much participation from the public. But, Mayor, you have been, you were key in that effort, and you've been such a, an example of doing the right thing for the right reasons, and again, resorting back to those basic principles. I appreciate your friendship. It's been a long time since we've been serving together. I will take ownership of the fact that I endorsed the other candidate in the last election, and it wasn't that I did not think that you were not capable, I, I thought, because it always had been done with a certain method, that that method needed to continue, and you've been such a shining example that that didn't need to be the case. You've done an awesome job, and I just want to congratulate you for, for proving me wrong and for letting your light shine in the way that it has. You're awesome, and thanks for the time that we spent together.
And I'm always following the hard ones. Kendalin, or Mayor Harris, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and I truly appreciate the phone calls, just to call and check in on me, make sure I was doing okay. Leading with kindness is a real thing, and I appreciate that, that's, that's how I am as well, and I love that our families have gotten to know each other a lot better. It's fun to run into each of them around town and in different circumstances. It's a unique situation to be on a council where we can all be different in our opinions, but when a decision's made, we all stand shoulder to shoulder with each other and, and move forward, and I appreciate that, that leadership to make sure that we're all in unison, so thank you very much.
Kendalin, I just feel so grateful that I got to sit as you're, on your right hand these last four years, and one thing I'm gonna just say, Kendalin is an amazing doodler. So, she does these incredible doodles, not that she's not listening, she's so, super engaged in listening, but she's also very artistic. I would like to say a hi and a double hi about Kendalin. One is she is a, you, Kendalin, are a very good listener. I always, you often lead a conversation with a question, and I think that that, you hear that often, that that is a sign of a real leader, is they ask questions and listen, and I know that you're absorbing the information, and you really want to get that information so you can help the council, or whatever it is we're working on, reach a collaborative state. And that's a word that I think is often overused in politics, or leadership is collaboration, but you're the real deal. You collaborate, and you know how to do it, and you're very good at it, and I appreciate that. You're also innovative. You have, kind of goes back to the doodling, but you started, like Richard said, the public comment period, the TED Talk series in Bountiful, the Bountiful Business Forum. You brought a lot of unique, different things to the city that highlight people who are working hard to like make the city better, and, and I think that you have an open innovator's mind instead of just thinking, "I'm gonna go in and do the same thing." I really appreciate your ability to, some things are hard, because we wanna say yes to everything, and I remember you telling me this a few years ago, "We wanna say yes to everything, we wanna do everything, but we can't." And I've never seen anybody explain the reasons why we can't do something, and maybe different approaches better than Kendalin. And, and it's not just a no, it's like, here are the reasons, but here are maybe some alternative solutions, and that goes along with being that outside-of-the-box thinker, and I think that's a superpower that you have, and I just love you.
Thank you.
I echo everything that has been said. I think it was interesting running for office recently and recognize, recognizing that there's a, a calm kindness that's throughout the city related to political, political issues, and I think that that largely stems from your example and what you've done, which I think is, is an incredible, incredible gift, your quiet power, your, your kindness, as has been mentioned. I thank you for your mentorship to me and to many, many people, getting us involved in, in the community in ways that we hadn't previously imagined. Thank you so much for that. You always have wise counsel and a deep political savvy, which doesn't come out as blustering or boisterous at all, it's just you, you get it, and, and you're, I think you build that through your relationships with people, so I can't thank you enough, but the city is a better place because of you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. You guys are awesome. Thank you. Oh, these are beautiful. Thank you so much. So, like, like Cecily said, you know, you can't, you can't do this alone, so I wanna thank all my friends and family, and especially James, my husband, my kids, Sterling, Esther, Ella, Skylar, my friend Becky, my mom, Cosette, my dad, who has since passed away, but four years ago when I ran, he was holding signs and cheering for me, and my mother-in-law, Shawnee, who helped me, and, and my father-in-law, who, who has always been so supportive as well, and so, I wanna thank my, my family members and my friends. Also, just wanna shout out to my siblings, I have 10 siblings, and that were very supportive. You know, the, the public, you really feel a sense, I'm sure you would agree, of, of, it's really humbling to have that trust from the public to be elected, and so I really appreciate the residents and their trust. I had this thing when I was elected where I, I, and, you know, Gary and I, the city manager, we had conversations about how, how we were going to do things going forward, and, and I remember saying, "I think focus is really important, and because if everything is important, then nothing is." And so, we have to get really clear on what's important and what our roles are, and so, as the city council, including the mayor, we are the what, and then the city staff is the how. And so, I loved focusing on what are our priorities and what is, what should be our focus. And I have to say that when I thought about what our focus should be, it is the essential functions of our city and what that is, and so, that is streets, that is power, that is water, that is garbage, you know, that is the essential functions of our city, that has to be our focus, we can't lose sight of that. And so... And so I really appreciate the department heads, each, each one of them. They're just stellar. And the employees of Bountiful City, they are just, they are just such good people. And, and I had the opportunity to make a video with each of the department heads, and it was really fun to be able to kind of describe what they do, and hoping that the public would watch these videos of learning about what these, what these people do, day in and day out. And it was, it was really fun for me to get to do that. I want to thank Sophia, she's been fantastic at the front desk. I want to thank Gary Hill, what a, what a wonderful city manager we have. He is just, when it comes to the budget, when it comes to personnel, he is just, we are so lucky to have Gary. I just, the 14 Davis County mayors that I had a chance to rub shoulders with, it was wonderful to get to know them. I'm really thankful for Randy Lewis, I did get to serve with him for eight years, and really respect him. The prior council members that I got to work with, Jesse Bell, Millie Barr, John Mark Knight, Beth Holbrook, John Pitt, Chris Simonson, and then these current council members that I have really grown to love. I just want to say two words about each person up here. So Gary, I would say brilliant and loyal. Brad, I would say hilarious and genuine. Lloyd, I would say honorable, and he's the Mandalorian. That's, that's his true identity, you can't tell because it's the ma, the mask, but. Richard, clever, and he's a fighter. And we, we saw that come through with his, the way he came back from his illness. Matt, people and fun. Cecily, inquisitive and bright. Beth, steady and warm. Kate, dynamo caretaker. Francisco, C3PO, he has all the answers, and positive, he's so positive. Tyson, dedicated, good. And I would say Miranda is savvy and resourceful. But really, all of these, all of the employees, I just can't thank them enough for the work that they do. I get a lot of credit, people come up to me and say, oh, the streets are plowed, and it's Charles, right? It's Charles and his team that are out there plowing. I get all the credit, and, but these guys that are in the trenches doing the work, and I appreciate them so much. Like it's been said, I really have a soft spot in my, in my heart for the business owners in Bountiful, the people who are giving their life savings and their blood, sweat, and tears to, to do business and help in, you know, bring great businesses here to Bountiful. And I also really appreciate the organizations in Bountiful, some of which Cecily, Cecily talked about. The people that run the museum, the, the Veterans Park, the concerts, Richard, the, you know, the Rotary, Freedom's Light, the Food Pantry, Handcart Days, I mean, there's just so many good people, and the city is good because of people like that. So it's just been such an honor to serve at, eight years on the city council and four years as the mayor of Bountiful. And I just, I thank everyone here, and, and for all your support, and the residents of Bountiful, for giving me the opportunity. So, thank you so much. So I, so I am sorry for the delay, but we will now be moving on to other business for our meeting, and so we understand if, if you need to leave. And we're, we have a request. Yes?
Thanks. Request for the city council, including the staff, to come here for a picture in honor of the two of you.
Okay, thank you so much. So we, we are having a picture here, the city council, along with any department heads that are here, and any staff that are up here on the dais. Please come up.
Where's Jed? Jed, Jed's coming up.
Kendalyn, can I have E.G. and Esther come up for?
Interrupt him, and make a motion.
Okay, we will move to our next item on the agenda, which is to consider approval of ordinance 2025-17. And we'll turn the time over to Brad.
Mayor move to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Just gonna see if our city attorney would allow me to do that.
Yes. Brad, are you okay with that motion?
Absolutely. Absolutely. This was an ordinance at your own request, back when we passed the initial ordinance.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Now our next item, which is to consider approval ordinance 2025-18, and we'll turn the time over to Bradley Jupson.
Make sure I'm on the right one, okay. Earlier this year, the legislature passed a ordinance requiring all cities to develop, to adopt the Utah State Urban Wildlife Interface Building Code. And as part of that, we also needed to adopt a map in which this building code would apply to. I do think it's important we talk about here, this is not the ultimate state map that'll develop high-risk and low-risk areas. This is very specifically where we're going to apply this new building code to. And this new building code will give our building inspector some discretion, basically to mitigate fire dangers within this area. Now, as you look at the map, you may see some areas that you think are, well, they bleed quite a bit down. This is where the, where our developed area meets our undeveloped area. So by, by a matter of law, if some of these smaller areas lower on the, on the list here, they decide to develop, they may be able to be removed from the map, because they will have self-fulfilled their own prophecy by developing the undeveloped areas. So if I don't have any other questions, I will turn it over to council for discussion.
Thank you. What questions do you have, council, on this?
I have a question. So I live in one of these areas, and let's say we're going to replace the roof. How am I going to know about this? Will, are we going to inform residents? Will it just be on the website? What, what, how can we best educate the public about this?
Other than during the building permit process?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Is that when you expect it would trigger, is, is someone goes to apply for a permit, and at the permit desk, the staff would check, and, and I'd let the resident know, the applicant know that they are in this area, and that some special conditions might apply to re-roofing the house, or an expansion?
A substantial remodel, I believe it's $50,000. Is that, it's a substantial remodel, and there's a whole list of the criteria that we will go to, to see whether it's a remodel. If you're redoing your kitchen, then we're not going to apply all these new things. If you're redoing your roof, there is a chance that we'll say, okay, well, these new shingles are gonna have to be applied.
Yeah, the Wooey Code does specify that if you live in this area and you are re-roofing, you would have to re-roof to a level that meets the requirement for the risk level. So we would notify residents in that process. We can also, we'll have the map available on the city's website, and, and we can also upload the code for people to review on the building.
On the, on the map, can it be just one of those layer filters that we have on the interactive map?
Sure. Yep.
Sorry, I have one more question. I'm looking at the requirements that say, talk about the roofing, defensible space clearance, and vegetation management standards. Again, will that apply only to new builds?
New builds are substantial remodels, substantial remodels that would impact those areas.
I'm just wondering if it might be possible to educate the, the people that live in those areas with, I don't know. I think, I think that this might be helpful, as we, as many of those areas are already built out, remodels would occur, but I wonder if citizens might, seeing this, might take care of it themselves, as a, as they see that these are things that could help prevent fires.
So we could, we have the ability through GIS to just select all of these parcels, and, and we could, we could mail them all a copy of the, the ordinance and an explanation of, of what's required, if the council would like us to do that.
I'd be very interested in that.
So I believe there's a second, like a part two to this coming later, when the legislature, or the state adopts their map. And as I've understood it, and I'd love for staff to, to correct or supplement if I'm wrong, that's gonna have some components related to landscaping and, and clearing defensible space around properties. And maybe it's really a combination of, of the two. People might not be undertaking a, a remodel anytime soon, but a defensible space might be something they're doing annually. If I, if I misunderstood the part two that's coming later?
There will be a part two, it'll be much more invasive into the citizens, and we don't have a lot of control over this. Part one is so that we can be part of this cooperation, the cooperative agreement, meaning if we do have a fire, we can receive funds to help mitigate the damages. Part two will be raising those funds, and that'll be done by the state. And as I understand it, and we do have the chief, he's still here, there will be some, there will be some sending out letters, they'll put them in different classifications of risk area, give them things they have to do, and also put some assessments on their home. But that's not, that's not us, that will have to do with the state.
Yeah, if I, I'll just give you my opinion and my understanding of this bill is, this bill does two very separate things. What the state is responsible for, and that's the high risk, and the lot assessments, and, and those things. And then what the cities and counties are responsible, responsible for. So adopting this ordinance is, is fulfilling the city's responsibility. We don't have any control, the city doesn't have any control over what the state determines is high risk, as far as those other properties are concerned, what the risk assessment looks like. The, the people to do those assessments aren't hired, the certifications aren't in place, so that is later down the road. The, the fee for those assessed properties, and what those properties are, that's, has to do with the state. We don't have anything to control that. What we can do is recommend, you know, areas for this wildland urban interface, and we've recommended that previous wildland fuels project areas be included in that, because we know they're historically an issue, and they're not gonna resolve themselves without help. We at the Fire District always lean on education for all residents, this is how you can make your property safe. We do post on our social medias, this is defensible space, this is what it means, this is how you can help us help you. So we do lean on that educational component when we're out in the public, or on our social media, and that kind of thing.
Thank you. Any other questions on this?
Will, will it be possible to have this ordinance and the map accompany our new website?
Yes.
That would be awesome, I think, too. I do really support the idea of reaching out to the property owners that are on this perimeter, but I think having it long-term on the city's website would be great as well.
So can I just ask a question? Would it be beneficial to reach out to the property owners for part one, or would it be beneficial to wait for part two to do the reach out outreach?
I'm not sure it would be wise for the city to do the outreach on part two, because we have no responsibility for it, and we wouldn't want to give somebody the impression that they can somehow contact the city and, and have different requirements or something. So I, I think if we're going to do outreach, it probably should be just for this piece.
Because the second one is the landscape stuff?
Yeah, the, and, and they may not be the same boundaries. Chief alluded to that, that the state will determine its own boundary for its own requirements, and we, we don't, and we don't know if they're gonna impose additional requirements, we don't, I mean, there's so much of that piece that's unknown yet, right, Chief?
Yeah. There's still a lot of information that needs to come out.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on this?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if there are not additional comments, that we adopt ordinance 2025-18, approving the Utah State Urban Wildland Urban Interface Code, and the Bountiful City Wildfire Urban Interface Zone Map.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, thank you. And now we'll consider approval of resolution number 2025-12, approving the land lease agreement with new singular wireless, Brad Jupson.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a little background, I didn't put in the staff report, probably should have. This is the first one of these I've, I've done. In our code, we specify directly that cell towers, they impact the public, they're necessary evil, we like them, they impact the public, and therefore, we would prefer them to go on public spaces where possible. So our code kind of restricts these cell towers to public spaces. The school district has one, but most of them exist in, in our, in our property, the idea that they impact the public, so that they're, they should also be benefiting the public. The location that was chosen here was chosen at one of our parks, in, in working with the planning department, the engineering department, and the parks department. My role in this was working on the lease. I believe we got very good, we have very favor, good terms to this lease. We are starting to increase the price that we're, we're charging to keep up with inflation. This is a 20-year lease. Essentially, when you talk to these companies, they believe the, about the first Essentially, when you talk to these companies, they believe the, about the first 10 to 15 years that they put into these cell towers is to recover the cost of building them. And it's the last five years that it ends up, it ends up working for them. Now, if we renew another five years, another five years, then they're in the profit. But if you have any questions about why it's so long, that's, that's essentially the terms of, of their agreement and pretty standard throughout the industry. So if you have any questions, I have Francisco, he's trying to leave, he's not going to leave. Francisco Lloyd and I will do our best as a team to answer, answer any questions concerning this, this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
Are we able to put in a cosmetic or aesthetic ask to this? And where I'm going with that is recently I was up by This Is The Place Park, and just to the north of that property, I noticed a cell phone tower that looked like a pine tree. So they had, they had, they had camouflaged it as, as if it was a tree. And so if this isn't a park, it'd be nice to see if they could do something similar.
Probably not at this point in negotiations. In our parks, they are permitted uses, not conditional uses. So having it there is a permitted use. So we really, we really don't have a lot of latitude as to conditions that we place on them. I know a lot of cities have gone to this. If this is a requirement that the city wants to move to going forward, my, my suggestion would be we need to adopt and alter what is in our city code in relation to our cell phone ordinance.
Is it, is it something you could ask the, ask them as if in the future, what would it need to be, or what would the ask need to look like for us to get something? Because I, we don't know if it's an extra cost, what, you know, what it is.
Oh, it would definitely be an extra cost. And Francisco wants to talk on this.
No, he's nuts.
A lot of cities have gone, a lot of cities have gone to this. And Francisco and I actually discussed this at like, whether we like the pine trees, whether we like the palm trees in St. George better than the pine trees. And we, we kind of just, you know, it's, it's really a legislative decision, but probably not on this lease. If it's a legislative decision we want to do, I'd be happy to take a broader look at our, at our cell tower ordinance. As it's written right now, like I said, it's restricted public property. It actually says in there that we recognize that we need these and that we encourage them to build and that we're going to assist in. If we want to change those type of topics, I'd be more than open for it. But I, I don't, I don't know if looking at it, the lease at this point would be the appropriate avenue. Francisco, anything on that?
No, nothing, nothing else to add.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one for Brad. Brad, so I had, I, maybe I'm remembering this correctly, maybe I'm remembering it incorrectly. If I recall, there's a, there was a desire by AT&amp;T to put in some more of these because they needed to meet not having calls drop when people are making emergency calls. Is this, is this why they're seeking this particular tower in this particular location?
I, I can't answer that as to their motive, other than, other than they do believe that this is a gap spot for them, that there are, there are citizens that are lacking in coverage and that they want to, they want to enhance that. I can't, I can't really say yes or no whether we've lost 911 calls. But I can, I can say that they, they've identified this as a problem area for them, for AT&amp;T.
As an AT&amp;T customer, I also feel like it's a gap spot. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, for clarity, on the map on 59, page 59, is that cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac at 300 North? I mean, I'm just, this was hard to kind of pin down, but unless you were able to type in all the meets and bounds, which, oh, here.
I'm once again going to defer to our planner or engineer to give us the exact location of this. This was not something that I negotiated with on the location.
Yes, it is just east of the end of that cul-de-sac. It's immediately north of the ball field in Rocket Park.
That's helpful because I thought it was in a different location at a different nearby cul-de-sac that seemed, this seems much less intrusive than where I had thought maybe it was going. Also a cul-de-sac at that, listed at that same address. I had a question about communication with nearby property owners. What are we going to be, how will we be communicating this with nearby property owners? The, the lease, the construction, what they can expect? And like the range of comms for people who might kind of feel like they need that information?
So we'll have to go through a permitting process for the actual construction and we can have a pre-construction meeting with AT&amp;T and their contractor and encourage them to be proactive in communicating with the neighbors about their schedule and their activities and, and how this is going to proceed from this point. We could, I'm assuming we could do plenty of outreach activity, you know, to let people know that this has been approved in the park.
I think that, that would be really appropriate. I think a little communication on the front end always saves a lot of heartache on the back end. And I know that I'm transitioning off of this council, but I really hope that the council will take it up, this, discussing the policy for future cell tower agreements. I agree that it is a need, it's a public, I mean, it's a thing that we need in our city. We, and as you said, we want to encourage this kind of lease, but if we can also encourage, you know, something that is aesthetic and the least intrusive, and we need to add language to our policy, I hope that we can bring that into a future meeting and that can be discussed.
Thanks. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I know to approve the land lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS dot LC.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we are, we, the next item is to discuss the general plan. The ordinance number 2025-19 is adopting the Bountiful by Design General Plan. So we will have a discussion first and then there will be a public hearing before our vote on it. So Francisco, I know that there were a few things, there were a few things that you, if you don't mind, are you, are you fine just kind of giving us a little presentation? And then we'll see if the council members want to bring up any other?
It's a very short presentation.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've been waiting to show you this graphic for four years.
Oh, look who did it.
I believe this was taken, this took place in 2021. Millie, her husband couldn't take care of the kids, so she brought him here. As a joke, a friend gave me a, this book, City Maps, and I always kept it in the office where, you know, when kids come in for boring meetings, I just handed this to them with some crayons. And this is what Caroline Barr came up with. I'm going to go through it real quick.
It looks a lot like the consultant's first map.
It may, it may. If you could help me with the lights, Miranda, real quick, I can see it well here. This one right here says hotels and apartments, those are the purple. The next one is paths, so she's thinking of active transportation in brown. This one says buildings and roads being built. So she's got more of a existing land use versus what's already there. This one, it says park and green space, in green, obviously. This one on the va, on the bottom, it says Veterans Park and large buildings. This one right here, oh, you can't see it there, but it says school. The one on the bottom says large homes. The next one on the left says townhouses, townhomes. This one, it was very hard to read, but the blue spaces, she identified them as popular spots. I, on top, Millie, is that your address or your 1413? And last but not least, look what she identified it. She identified it as Bountiful City. I gave this girl no instructions whatsoever. I just said, hey, don't be bored, go ahead and color here. So I just want to say that this is how the next generation imagines Bountiful, connected, colorful, walkable, and full of places to learn, play, and grow. Our plan should rise to meet the optimism these kids already see. So please keep that in mind. I'm going to go fast for the rest of the presentation. We're here to, to present you the revised general plan from that last direction that you provided to staff on November 25th. We're going to highlight the refi, the refinements that you had for both the text and the map. At your leisure, you, I, I received instructions from the mayor that you would like to hold a public hearing. It is not required by code. The only public hearing that is required is 14 days before the planning commission, which that already took place a few months ago. And we do recommend adoption of the plan. So I'm going to go really fast. You don't need, all this stuff you're, you're very familiar with. So the first text refinement, and by the way, this is all indicated on the staff report. If you'd like, if you'd like to stop me and, and, and ask me what page on the staff report, I would love to do that. So the first refinement that you provided is that we wanted to incorporate the specific, the South Davis-Greenway feasibility study. So we amended goal two, action one, under connected community, to read as it's revised on the very bottom. We, we already had a goal that addresses, but you wanted to be a little bit more specific. And this is to implement the feasibility study. We're going to move on to the next one, mayor, if that's okay?
Yes.
Refinement number two. I was asked to weave in where appropriate the term active transportation. So in looking at goal two, and again, under connected community, I thought it was more appropriate to remove non-motorized travel options and to, and to simply call it active transportation. That's how I, I think we could weave that in. I could further expand on, on why this makes sense. Moving on to the refinement number three.
Can we, can we interrupt? Can we interject? This was just one area where I thought an additional word adds clarification and is just, is, makes more sense. I'm, so on that revised goal, enhance access to and connectivity of active transportation routes. I, I was hoping we could just make a little editorial addition with the word routes.
Council, what do you think? You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay, I got Chaz taking notes for me.
Oh, thank you, Chaz. So is that clear?
Refinement two, add the word routes or routes.
Right. Is that clear, Chaz? Okay, thank you.
Refinement three, this was more caught on my end in that with the planning commission's recommendation, we switched from having a complete street design principle to complete street network. All we did, we simply added the word network to it. And I also added including active transportation at the very end based on that, that same former direction that council provided me to weave in active transportation. It does say all modes of transportation, but we wanted to emphasize that it, it includes it. And that's what I added at the very bottom.
Good.
So we added active transportation in two places. And I thought it would, it was already included, so there's no issue there.
Okay.
The fourth and final refinement, there were just grammatical errors that we had to, we switched around. I got confused with supply and demand, if you recall, and also I had an outdated sentence regarding the fiber network. Those were the four editorial refinements that you had. Can, council and mayor, can we move on to the map? Or do you want to spend more time with these?
If there's another area in, within the document, can we bring that up too?
Yeah, is it something we've already talked about?
It is, and I thought we had removed the word, but I just need the council to...
Help us know where you're looking.
Page 139, strategy three. It's talking about amend land, amending land use regulations to allow for higher density or new moderate income residential development. In the implementation paragraph, it says promote the establishment of moderate income housing within Main Street, Platte, Renaissance Tower Center, Hospital District, and other applicable districts. And I thought we had removed hospital district.
I agree with that. I thought we had also done that.
The, the reason we, we didn't remove it, and it's the same reason why the text in red on strategy one, two, and three are not capitalized and it doesn't have a, a period at the end, is that this was part of HB 3454, I forget the number, from three or four years ago, where we were mandated by the state to pick from a menu list of items, which we did. I was penalized because I capitalized the sentence and I added a period at the end. If you recall, I had to come back to you to re-adopt it without the capital letter in that Department of Workforce Services indicated that we should not mess around with the text. And this was, this implementation was already added to that portion of the plan. We can take it out, but that's, that's currently what we're doing and what we're reporting on, and we're moving on to year three this year of that. The, the governor's housing plan is supposed to come out sometime this month, which by, by legislative action, it hasn't come out yet, which is then supposed to remove, or replace is the better word, the moderate income housing component from a general plan through the next legislative session. So I think that most of this will come out one way or another, it's supposed to. But if you feel comfortable by us taking that out, I just don't want to then be penalized because nothing changes at the legislature and then we amended our implementation strategy. Does that make sense?
Because we need three areas or two, like, I don't know where the penalty could be.
It, it's, it says other applicable, I, I got burnt by them once, I don't want to get burnt by them again.
It just had to be so exact before. Did you have a thought on that, Councilwoman Bratcha?
Well, I, I was going to say, you know, the hospital district or zone or neighborhood, depending on what we're calling it, I, I don't, I don't think it's the right one for this, so I, I'm, I'm worried about its inclusion here. But the moderate income housing plans and adopting them exactly according to the formula that workforce services required was a ridiculous thing that hung up many cities that had to come back for multiple approvals in back-to-back years. Like it was, it was something from a League of Cities and Towns board perspective that we heard about multiple years and were really frustrated with things as dumb as capitalization and periods. And so I guess I'd ask, not just Francisco, but Gary and Brad, if, if we were to take that out, because this is clearly, I, I think a broad concern that we have, would that jeopardize our being a moderate income housing compliant city based on the plan we've currently submitted? Or is it something we should take out when we're, if we're still required to do moderate income housing plans in 2026?
May I go first? My first thought is, it does say in other applicable districts. So we, if we change it, if we don't change it, we'll just never get to it. Because we're working on others. And, and, and to answer your question, I don't know whether we're going to get penalized for changing our implementation strategy by removing two words. Like, I can't, I don't know. I didn't think I was going to get penalized for, for having a, a capital letter and a period.
Yeah.
Those are my thoughts.
I'm simply not prepared to, to speak on this tonight with any definitive answer. It's just too complicated of an issue to give an answer at this point. I apologize to the council for that.
I think that's an honest answer. That's, that's just fine. Any other thoughts, Gary, or, okay?
I have another thought about this, if I may. In our map, that is at the end of the packet, you know, our future land use map, the hospital neighborhood district, again, neighborhood, is under the community commercial. And in our community commercial, it does not have a residential component because it is meant to prioritize, obviously, the commercial uses, the office spaces, the services, and those types of things. So I think keeping it in here is confu- So, I think keeping it in here is confusing. It adds confusion to our document, to our final product, because it's saying two different things about this area. And so, because this plan is aspirational, it's what we hope to see in the future, what we're planning for, I think it is appropriate to remove it because it is not what we're hoping to see or planning for. It's not what we are aiming to see in the future. What we're, it is that community commercial component or land use. And so, I would like to remove it.
Okay, any other thoughts, other Counsel members? Okay, we have some thumbs up. Okay. All right, moving on.
So, we got that noted. We're going to move on to the map. You had four basic changes. Remove the neighborhood center overlay on Bountiful Boulevard and 1800 South. That was recommended by the Planning Commission. Adjust the transit-ready overlay at 400 North to terminate at Main Street. Shift the northwest boundary transition along 400 West between the single-family residential and neighborhood mixed residential, and reclassify the Orchard Bend area as directed by Counsel from 2550 South to 200 West as neighborhood mixed overlay. The first map I'm going to show you, this is the November map. This was the final version of the Planning Commission map, and here is the December map. As you can see, the commercial overlay has been removed. Transit-ready ends at Main Street. This boundary on what I'm going to call the northwest area has been appropriately shown to have the residential mix along the west side of Fourth West. And we've got the bend, the Orchard Bend, that we spent most of the time talking about last time. So, we find that we made the changes as directed by Counsel at that last meeting. Should we spend some time talking about that, make sure we're good?
Any questions on the map? Okay.
I'm just going to move on. I just want to move on and talk about, just to reiterate, the general plan adoption does not change zoning. No immediate zoning changes occur upon adoption. The general plan is a policy guide. Keyword is "guide." A policy guide, not a regulatory document. Implementation of the general plan, it's like launching submarines, and both keys have to be turned at the same time. One is the zoning map amendment, and the other one is the land use code amendment. If one is turned and the other one isn't, nothing happens. So, I'm sure Lloyd appreciated that analogy here. Again, implementation requires both updates. And that is whether we handle that as a city, which we are preparing to start our implementation strategy over the next two years, or whether the public, i.e. a property owner or a developer, submits both a land use code text amendment, that's one key, and a zone change, that's the other key. In that, the current zoning code, the land use code, was never drafted to support this current general plan. Again, I can't emphasize this enough. It requires both updates. Any questions for me?
Mayor, could I ask one question?
Yes.
Mr. Astorga, the process you just described whereby a property owner could come to you and apply for a code text amendment and a re-zone, would they still be charged those fees if their request conforms with the outline of the updated general plan?
You're talking about, would they be charged the fees if they conform? Is that the question?
The question is, if the landowner's application assists the city in hastening the process of putting this into code, could those fees be waived, or would they still be charged the fees for the code text amendment?
I'm going to answer that one for Francisco. We would still charge the fee.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious.
Mr. Astorga is not authorized to waive any fees.
Quick question. Counsel can initiate code text amendments.
Correct.
For no fee.
Correct.
So, if counsel chooses to initiate amendments, then it could be changed and then...
It could, and we know that we're not going to please everybody. I have limited resources in my department where I cannot just change the entire city in a three-month period, right? So, we're going to have to prioritize some areas, make some decisions along the way, which then is going to upset some people by saying, "How come you didn't get to me first?" But that's the beauty of, they can initiate the process by paying the fee and submitting the application.
You can move to the front of the line.
That's always an option that anyone has.
Perfect. Thank you.
It makes sense. I mean, you know, if somebody wants to pay and they want to move to the front of the line and have their request be, you know, looked at, then they can do that. Okay, any questions so far on this?
I have one additional item that I would like to ask if the Counsel would entertain.
Just one moment, just one moment. Was there anything else in your presentation, Francisco? Okay, okay, Councilwoman Bradshaw.
So, this would be on Page Three of the plan, Page 86 of the packet. As I understand it, this is a suggestion from our Planning Commission that came later after they had finished their work.
Thank you.
And returned the plan to us, but they wanted to send one additional suggestion. At the end of that, Page Three, there is a special thanks to all community members who participated in the process. And they've suggested adding an additional line that would be at the end of that special thanks. And this is what they suggested. "This plan is dedicated to planning and design advocate Jesse Bell." With a quote, "A wise man plants trees in whose shade he will never sit." With a dash, Greek proverb. So, that was a suggestion to be included from the Planning Commission.
That's nice. I really like that.
It seemed appropriate to me, and so, I'm happy to champion it and hope everyone else would entertain that.
Yeah. Is everybody in agreement?
It came after their official recommendation, so I felt uncomfortable placing it on your item, but that's how the Commission felt. Unfortunately, they came to me after they made their recommendation. So, I'm glad that Councilmember Bradshaw was able to bring it here.
Thank you. Good. Sounds great. Sounds like we're in agreement. So, any other Council members have any other last items for consideration before we move to our public hearing?
Yeah, I'd recommend we move everything to single-family residential.
Any other?
I was hoping I could get a second from Councilmember Price Uish.
Oh, shoot. It's just not going to happen.
Oh, boy. I'm coming at you on Page 162 with something.
162.
I was just hoping that on Page 162, we could change it from second white settlement to non-Native American.
There are two references there regarding that.
I think...
162, and it was...
Yeah, under context.
First paragraph, under context, white settlement. And you're proposing we change it to...
Non-Native American. In both instances.
May I ask what the purpose would be of the change?
It would just be more accurate because there were a lot of different settlers who came here of various descent and various ethnicity. And so, I think it's just, it's a broader, more accurate representation of what happened.
Any other thoughts on that? Any other Council members in favor or opposed to this proposed change?
I don't object to the change. I don't, I feel like probably some of this text probably came from our I'm forgetting the name of the...
Consultant.
The consultants, or maybe even the book on Bountiful's history that I'm forgetting the name of, Bountiful's history book. And, you know, terms that were common at certain points, you know, with greater reflection, aren't as common now. Believer in when you know better, do better. So, I'm comfortable making the change and ensuring that as we put this document forward, we're not, we certainly don't intend any offense to any groups. And so, if it's easy to make a change that assures that we've removed that, it's fine with me.
I support that, too.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We got it noted, Mayor.
With the caveat that it's okay to be white.
True.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, you made a note of that change. Okay, okay, any other proposed changes from the Counsel before we open up our public comment time?
I was just going to know. I had some worries about how we had characterized the hospital zone in the land use type and the commercial land use type. Looking back through the tables and the fact that the housing use is not in the filled-in circles, I'm feeling better about that. I know I raised that with a few of you, so I just want to circle all the way back that I think I'm comfortable with how the staff had described that after our last discussion, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Bradshaw, can you, do you know the page of the circles? I know the page, but just where is that?
The circle page is...
It comes at the end of the land use types, the very last page of it.
34 of the plan, 117 of your packet.
And you were just referencing community commercial, is that right?
Yeah, yes. That's the right section, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, if you're referring about the circles.
Yes, and the land use type that includes our note about the hospital neighborhood is in community commercial, yes.
Okay, any other proposed changes from Council members? Okay, we will now open the public hearing. We'd love to hear from you. Anyone who would like to speak, please state your name and where you live.
Mayor Harris, as they come forward, I just wanted to let you know that we've included every written public comment that was submitted after July 30th in this packet. We repeated those comments over and over again. We're not trying to kill trees. We just wanted to be very transparent throughout this process. So, all written comments have been included in the packet from our dedicated email that we set up. And the draft general plan went live on July 30th, just a quick reminder of the process. Thank you, Gary. I apologize for taking your time.
Not a problem. Gary Davis here, Bountiful. At the very beginning, when I first read the concept, I guess it was, that was put out by the consultants, contractors who were hired to put this thing together, I was greatly concerned and not happy with what they had as vision and goals. But it's been a very long time working on this thing. Let's get it done, please. As has been mentioned multiple times, this is not law. This is not regulation. These are guidelines. And fine tuning can be done as we go forward. But let's go forward with this thing, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else?
My name is Elaine Oaks, and I am appreciative of the many meetings that you've had and have the effort that you have put in in this general plan. I do, and I know that you spent a considerable amount of time talking about the Orchard Bend last meeting. And I would hope that you could just make a small change in moving the North Canyon, moving that change that you have, that you made to neighborhood mixed residential overlay when it was from 2550 down to just below Bolton Elementary, 200 West, and where Orchard turns. I'm just, I would like, I would hope that somebody, one of you, could move to change, to add from 2550 to just north of Bolton Way, which is where the, where Dick's Market is. And that's, the map is on Page 209 of the packet and Page 126 of the general plan. The reason is, is those homes back by Dick's are all very nice and newer homes. And I think it's appropriate to keep it in line with that. The neighborhood mixed residential overlay has the term "scale appropriate." And so, if you have the duplexes or the townhomes, they're more low-profile and they're more appropriate for the area that is there and the neighborhood that is there. And so, again, I would ask that a member of the Counsel would move to change the map from 2550 north to Bolton Way, where it hits Dick's Market, and make that neighborhood mixed residential overlay. Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks for your involvement all through this process. I know you've been engaged and appreciate that.
Ron Mortensen, the person who supported the tax increase.
Infamously.
Following my observations on the general plan, and I think, as Gary mentioned, the plan was developed by an outside group that had no real understanding of the history and unique features of Bountiful. The plan, as it's written now, kowtows to legislative demands. It requires that the city council become agents of the state rather than representatives and defenders of the people of Bountiful. The plan divides Bountiful into upper-income east side and the moderate-to-low-income west side, which makes Bountiful more like Salt Lake City than the old Bountiful of old. The plan protects the property and quality of life of east-siders while doing just the opposite of those on the west side. The plan does not acknowledge or effectively address the critical water issues facing Bountiful. The plan drives the final stake in the heart of Bountiful as a city of beautiful homes and gardens and makes it into just another nondescript suburb of Salt Lake City. And finally, as you'll recall, the original meeting of the Planning Commission was attended by a large number of your constituents who provided their input on the plan in hopes that they would be listened to. They are not here tonight because that hope is gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I forgot. Two points of clarification. It takes two keys to launch missiles, not submarines.
Is that what I said? Oh, I'm sorry.
And Ron also supported a tax increase for South Davis Metro Fire Agency. And that tax, that additional funding was going to go to pay the firefighters more, less than they're worth, I'm sure, but give them some additional funding. So, Ron supported two tax increases that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak to the general plan? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the Counsel. So, Council members, are there any, is there any discussion?
Could I, Mayor?
Yes.
Just in regard to two of the comments made. I think it's important, in my mind, we very intentionally put the boundary on that removal of the overlay on Orchard Drive because of what lies on the west of Orchard Drive there, which is sparsely developed property that probably ought to... that probably ought to be more developed. And that's why that boundary existed, in my mind, and I'm really comfortable leaving it there. And I'm sorry that that's not in compliance with what Ms. Oakes shared, but that, that was why I voted for that boundary. Additionally, Mr. Mortensen, we don't typically address participants in our public hearings personally, but I think that folks are here, are not here tonight in large part because they have been heard and because a lot of their concerns were robustly discussed and either incorporated into the plan, helped to modify the plan, or they were outvoted. So, I, I know that the process has been thorough. I know that people have been listened to. We've even read all of the emails. In fact, now I've read all the emails twice. And I'm just really comfortable where we've ended up on this plan. And I'd even go as far as to say that a, a lot of aspects of this plan I'm really proud of.
Are there any other questions, comments, suggestions, proposals?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to echo what Councilmember Higginson said. I feel like all of us from the get-go have been really excited about and, and worked really hard to truly represent the residents of Bountiful, and it's not a big conforming group. We've heard many, many varying viewpoints, and I, I would agree with Councilmember Higginson that we have worked to do indeed, to indeed protect the quality of life as we move forward into the future, and what I believe is going to be a really beautiful and bright future here in Bountiful. And I also feel comfortable with keeping that place type on the elbow of Orchard the same. I, I do have like a little nitpicky thing that has nothing to do with substance or policy, but I know these things have to be discussed publicly. There's a, I mean, there's a tiny little unfinished sentence that I think just didn't come out in an edit that...
What, what page?
Yeah, I know exactly what she's talking about. It was when I copied and pasted from another, from, it was from the moderate income housing plan. It took the header from the title of the document. It's in the moderate income housing plan. We, we'll, we'll remove that. It is on page... Cecily, do you have that page?
Oh, page 56, Strategy 2. It's a sub-bullet point, second bullet point, second sub-bullet point.
Yep.
Yeah.
That, that was the title of the 2003 plan.
Yeah, I know it's just nitpicky, but I know these things must happen publicly.
Okay. All right, thank you for...
That's, that's my last little thing.
Okay, you've got, you've got that, you've got that change.
So, so Mayor, I would like to just review the changes. Number one, add the word "routes" or "routes." Two, remove "white settlement" with "non-Native American." Three, the dedication. And four, this sentence that was made it by mistake on page 56.
Okay.
Is, is the rest of the council happy with "non-Native settlement" rather than "non-Native American settlement"? Or what would you prefer? I'm only asking to clarify what you want there, because I didn't hear you say "American."
I said "Native American," but it could...
I thought you just said "Native." I'm sorry. Then my, my hearing had turned off.
Yeah.
My apologies. Okay?
But, so, Francisco, there was that part where we had agreed to remove the hospital designation.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
You got that.
Hospital district removal. Sorry about that. Thank you for catching me.
Okay. Anything else, council member, any, council members, any other changes you would propose or questions or comments?
I have a motion.
Okay, let's hear it.
I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-12 approving, excuse me, 2025-19 ordinance adopting Bountiful by design, the general plan update, with the changes noted. Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Is this a big two moment?
Yes, it is. What was that word you used for the acronym WUI? Would you say that into your mic really loudly?
Oui.
There we go.
So, just one quick comment, Mayor.
Yes.
I, I just want to say that we, we are too excited in the planning department to start implementing this general plan. We had a quick discussion with Mayor Harris, and she said, "Francisco, you're just a kid in a candy store." And I, I do feel like that, in that it's going to be rough. We can't go around the legislative way. We have to go through the Planning Commission, and I'm nothing but excited to get going on this and to really have those great discussions with the public and the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your years of work on this, Francisco, and thank you very much. And Lloyd and Gary and everybody, thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Hill, the next item.
Every year, the council has to adopt a meeting schedule. You have a copy of that in, on page 250 of your packet. My goodness. Basically, it would, we would give notice that the council intends to meet the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. You can change that, of course, whenever you want to. And we look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh, I removed my second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and now we have a motion to move to a closed session, so is there a motion in that regard?
There, I'd make the motion that we move to a closed session to discuss the acquisition of sale, or sale of real property pending litigation, and/or to discuss, discuss the character and/or competency of an individual as outlined in state code.
Second.
And we will move to a roll call vote.
Where's her walkout song?
Oh, do I get a song?
No. Councilmember Bradshaw.
I won't vote without a song. You can sing it. Aye.
Councilmember Higginson.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Councilmember Child.
Aye.
And Councilmember Price-Hewish.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned to a closed session.